And that's very funny. We have a few things on our agenda which I left upstairs, so I'm gonna take yours. We need to take up the issue of the Kendall demolition permit.
I'll move it to later. You can accept the delay of sixty days.
Do you guys wanna wait thirty days for that? You could wait ten minutes for him and we do the other stuff. Because I don't know if you guys as long as it's not tonight. The planning commission recommended delaying it sixty days.
Would we like to add questions?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm just wondering when I felt the decision was made.
No, this is Kendall.
Kendall.
This is a whole new application. And the plan-
Kendall Harber.
Kendall.
John.
The planning commission had a sit walk.
Yes.
But they haven't taken formal action.
Right. I've heard what they want to do, which I don't want to announce, but they need the supervisors to give an extension so that the planning commission can discuss it tonight and maybe take another thirty days, I don't know. But it just, the process just started, so a sixty day delay is not unreasonable.
Is there anybody pushing for the permit to be issued?
No. I mean Kendall submitted the permit application, but they're, you know, they understand there's a process and they're just trying to get it started.
Well, I don't have any problem seconding your motion, so I will therefore second your motion.
What was your motion?
To-
Approve the delay.
Approve the delay?
For sixty days.
Sixty days, that's correct.
Now, if the planning commission recommends approving it and the supervisors recommend they can do it earlier or they can delay it, won't you know?
Yeah, up to the sixty days. John.
Is it clear when this time clock starts?
Yes.
It seems to be confusing.
Can you tell us what you, I think I know, go ahead please.
Yeah, the time clock started at the last planning commission meeting for this. And they have initial thirty days. So that's why before the thirty days, they need to give extra time.
Okay. Was this an additional sixty or total of sixty?
It might be an additional.
An additional.
Doesn't the time, doesn't the clock start the day it is turned over to the zoning or, the zoning officer?
They submitted it right before the last planning commission meeting.
Okay.
This is, you know, I don't know if you're thinking about Ken, Longwood, everybody, Bill Houghton called me today, he thought it was Longwood too. Everybody did-
Any other comments? I call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There should be in the parking lot a-
No, it would be a six forty five.
Six forty five.
We'll phone that one.
Okay.
I wanted to, I sent all three of you a request from the high school to donate to their dean and light. Kennedy High School is doing a project, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project to put up lights, additional lights at the school, so that they can have more activities for the kids. It's not a high school project, it's a community project. And so there, the community, this community group is raising money to put up the lights. And they've requested that the township consider giving them a donation. They're short twenty thousand dollars. They are in the process of asking New Garden and the Borough, but are not hopeful that New Garden and the Borough will contribute. And I'd explain to the supervisors, the supervisors have never contributed to a high school.
So this is directly to the high school, this?
Or, or any project that has to do with a high school.
Yeah. It's more athletic booster club.
Well-
John's getting some.
Don't this involve athletic field, I suppose?
Yeah, it's lighting for the field.
Are the fields within Kennedy Township, the new one?
Yeah.
I don't-
No, they're at the high school.
They're really in the borough.
Up where the track is?
Yes.
Baseball field.
Yes.
So it's in the borough?
It is, but it benefits Kennedy Township kids as well, New Garden and the Borough. And some of these Marlboro kids, actually.
Is there some kind of booster club or-
That's who's doing it.
That's who's doing it.
And, and they then will take over the whole funding and responsibility, maintenance?
Yeah. And actually, the principal of the high school called me the other day to give his support to the project and encourage-
Yeah, well, naturally.
The supervisor to contribute.
Not on my budget, no.
This is the first time I've really focused on the whole subject. It's relatively new to me. What are these, lights gonna be on twenty-four seven? Doubt it.
No, the Borough has light ordinance, light ordinances. They said the lights have to go off, I think, by eleven. They have to be shielded from the neighbors.
Okay, that's where it's going here.
I talked to the principal about all that. I brought this up to the supervisors and all three of them asked, their first question was what are, for our own New Garden going to contribute? But they, they haven't committed to it yet and I think they're doubtful that they will.
Want to give the clock down?
I would certainly be happy to go a third. And if that went back to the other two entities, that we will go a third. If they will, that might put some pressure on them to do it.
Well, I put a phone call in New Garden and Borough asking them if they plan to contribute.
Would you go back to them and tell them that we will, we will commit to a third if they could predict a third each?
This is a third of the twenty thousand.
That's correct. Yeah. So make them feel a little guilty if they say no.
As a good approach, I'm just wondering what type of precedent you're going to set and how you're going to say no to other high schools.
I don't know. I think it'll come up when it comes up.
Well, it's the only high school in the township.
Oh.
It's the only high school that the township residents go to, you know, public high school.
Public, okay.
Yeah.
However, one of the other things you can think of, Kennedy Township residents pay a lot of school tax to the young ones.
Oh boy.
You know, so it's, you both, you know.
Well, you said again, this is not a school.
It's not, but, and it, and it is a-
Crockett percent.
It is a good thing for the kids.
It's fairly representative, recreational, I think. I think the township traditionally does support that.
That's where my heart is fundamentally, but-
Well, we contribute to other recreation activities, that's why I don't think it's, I don't think it's really-
It's not a precedent, no.
Because we do contribute to KU.
True.
The park, the park and-
We're gonna be contributing next year to the Enson Nixon Park to help them relocate their entrance, and that's, we budgeted something in excess of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we, we certainly do support recreational activities that live in the township and around the township.
Non-students have access to these fields?
I don't know.
Wow.
Yes.
I mean, I know residents have used them, they're not students.
I don't-
The track.
The light is field.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think-
Where the track is.
I think they can use them, but when they're not being used by high school students.
Obviously, right.
Yeah. Just like the tennis courts are available to anyone.
So are these lights right on the football field?
Yeah.
But not the baseball field?
I'm gonna look it up. I'm pretty sure they're near the football field.
I think their emphasis was night football.
Yeah.
Evening football, they were.
Yeah, most of them seem to go Friday nights and then Saturday game.
Yeah, right.
They, I know that they did go through a lot of hearings for this because a lot of the residents knew there and they concerned with the lighting.
I would think if they did some real competitive games, it would noise.
Then the lights go off at eleven, apparently, and if that's the, the time that everybody goes home, noise should, I repeat, should stop.
Yeah, it's right on the, um, fields, the football field.
Okay, well, let's leave it at that. Let's see what, how the other two entities respond.
I know that, that field, that field down on Rosedale, they do things there quite late at night because they have lights, because they're loud. It sounds like they're in our kitchen. They're so loud down there. You know, just the way the town travels.
But still across from the soccer field.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Lisa, do you wanna go on to the, the next one? Are we gonna talk of the political ordinance? I don't think we are.
Scotter, we just talked about the lights at the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And I said that, you know, all three of you asked if New Garden and the Borough contributed, and it hasn't yet, they haven't been that yet. So Mike and Bob suggested telling them that if New Garden and the Borough contributed third, which is pretty much what you said the other day in the email, that the township will.
So bring it away to here.
If needed.
Yeah, that sounds perfectly equivalent.
We also agreed to a sixty day extension for the demolition permit for Kendall.
For Kendall.
Kendall.
Not Longwood.
Well, since I already interrupted everybody, I apologize. I've been at, at a meeting representing the township and by the time we got away, you know, Pete Walton was there, so-
Right, play that.
I'll vouch for him, if you vouch for me.
We don't take it at times.
The political sign ordinance? Haven't heard anything lately from the three of you on that ordinance.
It's not, right now I haven't investigated.
Okay.
Is there something that we need to do immediately?
No.
Okay.
You guys proposed the ordinance. Scotter sent some concerns to Bob Adams about individuals' rights. Bob sent a memo back about that.
Right.
So then I, I don't know what you guys wanted to do next.
Bob said the ordinance is okay for it.
And the order he said you could extend it sixty days.
Yeah. Could you describe the ordinance, please?
Do you like the copy?
I just described it.
I'll describe it, I can also give you a copy. It's, it's part of our sign ordinance. Right now in the sign ordinance, it says that political signs have to be taken down or cannot be put up five days in advance, I think is what it says.
No, no, no.
Oh, five days after.
It would have to come down after.
So this ordinance said it can't be put up more than thirty days in advance.
Why is there a reason for the ordinance? For the change?
I think it's probably scenic views being interrupted by lots and lots of placards in odds and odds of different places.
When, when did that happen?
Um, oh, it's happened. It's happened many, many times in the past.
And so why is there a difference now?
Some people don't like it.
How many people?
I can't answer that. Do you have any comments, Scotter or Bob, about it?
Well, I'm, I'm concerned with our super, uh, the council. Yeah, my, I, I did have concerns and, and I appreciate the fact that, that Bob Adams reviewed it and reviewed it a second time when I sent him some materials that suggested that perhaps his perspective was incorrect. And I understand how he's reaching his judgment. I'm probably a just as black kinda guy that when it comes to freedom of speech, particularly political speech, I'm an absolutist, pretty close to an absolutist. And so even though I understand Bob's reasoning and his conclusion, I'm still concerned about the fact that we are telling people who wanna put up signs on their own property that they can't do it. And I have a difficult time doing that. We've, we've taken the position that, that landowners can do on their property what they want to do. We made that decision when it came to Longwood Gardens and the three historic buildings. I think that equally as important is freedom of speech on your own property. I, I think that there are reasonable standards to apply. That is, if you want to put up a billboard on your property, that would be disturbing, that, that begins to press the limit. That might be akin to yelling fire, the crowded theater. But we're talking about little signs that are twice the size of this piece of paper, sitting a foot off the ground. And I find that difficult. And frankly, I don't understand why it's come up now as opposed to six months ago or last year. And I, I'm concerned that it's going to have an impact on people who, who are gonna be absentee voters and who may not be around thirty days in advance or twenty-five days in advance when, if our ordinance is passed, those signs can then go up and influence that voter. But if somebody is on his or her way out of the jurisdiction sixty-five days from now or fifty-five days in advance of the election, then there's no way of reaching that person.
I think that's making a very good point. Why don't we postpone considering this ordinance to a time to be determined in the future? Thank you.
Could I ask-
Yeah.
-one question? Do you think there's any limit for a landowner to put up these type of sign?
Is that directed to me?
Yeah.
Do you mean limit for sign, size, or just time?
Political.
There is a limit for size.
Size is already limited.
It's already, and you're okay with the size?
Yeah.
Time, you wanna have no time restriction, so it could be up permanently?
Well-
As a purist, or?
Yeah, as a purist. And that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm inclined to go.
How about number of signs?
Numbers of quantity?
Quotum.
Well-
The point is, I think there, it does make sense to have some limits.
I understand.
In fact, that's why we have a sign ordinance.
Yeah.
To maintain some of the things Mike was talking about. Otherwise, you're gonna lose control. I could probably, on my part, I could probably, you know, I could put fifty signs and leave them there permanently, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna do it. Somebody might.
Well, that's right. And I understand, and that's the reason why I qualify saying that I'm almost a purist on that. Well, I think that there is indeed for some limitation.
When you reconsider, I think there are limits.
Yeah, I, I agree that there should be some limits, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I was-
Is there anything, is there something you can say?
Yeah, I mean, I was trying to find out what was driving it. I mean, you know, you drive around now, you don't see any signs. And at the last election, I think there were a lot of different candidates over the course of probably well over a year that were vying in the presidential race that had signs up at one time or another from both parties. And so what I was trying to find out is, what's the problem? What are you trying to fix?
Well, can I point out what the problem is?
Yeah.
And ask you another question? There are questions that come into the township, both by telephone and by when you see somebody in Giant, as you said, and the question is, how long do these things have to stay on? Simple question. I'm just curious as, they have to have a disclaimer on, and the party has to be registered by the county. Does the county have any restrictions on this? County board directions, that is. Has anybody checked?
Good question. Very good question. I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, going to John Haggerty's point, and as Mike said, scenic views here aren't really the rationale for proposing the ordinance. And in addition, the timings are curious. You know, there were Romney signs up on fifty-two from last April all the way through the election. There's a local election in this township this year. It's just very strange that this ordinance comes up at this time. Now, the scenic part here, there are several places around where non-political signs, yard signs, same size, are up all year or all the time. Right there at the Sunoco on fifty-two for a tip.
They're, they're in violation of the ordinance.
I didn't say?
You take them down.
There's red signs, there's a whole, whole slew of them there.
That's an ongoing problem of the business.
The other guy, the others around, McCory's place.
He always has signs.
Right. He even has a real estate sign. Does he have a permit for that?
No, he's in violation too.
How about that? Art Bernarden had a sign on Route One. Let's talk about scenic views, it was a huge sign when he designed, I guess, the Exelon Building, had pertained to that. That thing was up twelve years. It was only taken down, I believe, last year.
That's a commercial sign.
They're, they're different.
Well, did he have a permit for those twelve years? Mr. Bernarden, firm?
Probably not.
Well, it's a commercial sign. You know, I certainly, it was all flaking off the paint and everything. I don't think that's a scenic view, especially-
It's a permitted sign.
Especially on Route One.
Permitted.
She said he didn't have a permit, probably didn't. Probably initially he had a permit, but he forgot to take it down. You know, some free ad it's on. My point is, this is a little bit selective, it seems to me.
I think that's your point, Joe.
That is my point.
Okay, okay.
I don't-
Thank you.
Like the, as you guys are going to reconsider or think about it, it would be interesting if there was some, some consistency around the area. And I think the idea of who just said it about, does the county have, the chief just said this, does the county have any restrictions? But I'll make you a bet that what you do here is gonna be different than these Marlboro's, gonna be different than, you know, New Garden and what have you, and, or Chansford. You're in Chansford right here. So it'd be interesting to see what we try to be consistent with the local population.
Billy, you put, you make a good, a very good point, but let me back away from your point and put it into a different context. If we were to do that, and it's a good idea, who is going to coordinate with all of the other townships on this very important matter? Who is gonna do it and who is gonna be paid to do that?
I think he's just asking to look in and see what they do.
It's a good idea. They always say thirty days now. Or they also say ninety days now.
Who's gonna find out?
Well, you can find out a lot by going, just Googling, uh, political signs.
They spend their time to do it.
And I've done them already.
I can just go on my website and see.
Well, the regional planning commission would be a logical place to at least ask the question. And I'm, and I'm very confident that, that our township officers could ask the secretaries, the, the township secretaries and the other townships, what's going on.
I can take five minutes and email the other one and ask them.
Okay, you're gonna take the wall on that one? Good. Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to the next one.
Just one last question about that. You, you said that you're gonna review this and discuss it in the future. Is that at the board supervisors meeting this month or perhaps next month?
I don't know. It all depends on how, what information comes forward when. Okay? I don't know the answer to your question.
Could I ask that fair warning be given and that it be discussed at a full board supervisors meeting?
Well, it would be.
It would be the agenda if we do it.
And the agenda is published, published well ahead of time.
And what I've been doing is, if they get it to the point where it's in a draft form, I would announce it the month before they even consider it.
Perfect.
Okay. Thanks. Dog leash ordinance. Let's take this one around for a bit.
So, we discussed the last work session, that the Borough would like the township to adopt a dog leash ordinance so that if they're straight, if there's dogs off the leash and in the park, the police there, whether it be the township police or the Borough police, can enforce the ordinance.
I think that's a good idea, and the ordinance that we have, I would like to suggest that it apply to the Enson Nixon Park only.
The proposed ordinance does.
That's good.
There, Scotter suggested having it applied to the entire township, which I want, I was gonna ask Albert, because Albert does have issues with dogs, but we also have the SPCA that enforces the offense being a dog law.
The state law says a dog must be on a leash or under the owner's control.
Right.
And some people have very good control of their dogs. What I wanted to bring up to you is not just Nixon Park, but parks in the township. Because you have a couple other parks, the, the baseball fields are in the township, they're borough owned property and they have control over them, both have jurisdiction, but there's another place where dogs need to be on a leash.
Well, then maybe Scotter's suggestion of the entire township is the right way to go then?
No, it's not the right way to go because in the developments down on, at Longwood, there are dogs that are under the dog owner's control. But when you get into an environment like the baseball fields, where there's multiple people that dogs aren't used to, then the owner does know it's have control, and there's children there. Okay, little field, if you make it parks instead of just Enson B Nixon Park.
Or how about public places? Public parks.
A little broad. Public parks.
But is, is the KU called a park?
Hmm. Good question, I don't know. It's part of, it's, it's in Nixon, Nixon, that one's I'm not too bad for, but the judge will decide whether that's part of Nixon Park or not. It's been viewed in the past that it is. But what I'm getting at is the baseball fields on South Street. There's two baseball fields there and that's where we have had some problems, because the people say, it's not on leash, it's under my control. Well, it's not under your control.
But what if-
You could say ball fields.
Yeah, parks and ball fields.
Say that.
Athletic fields.
Athletic fields.
Yeah.
You have them too.
Okay, go deal that way.
Because that's where the people gather.
Right.
All right.
Is State Line Woods a park?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so what, what about that? Just it's not enforced?
None of the dogs are on leash, they're, they're all well behaved.
Well, if they, if they present a problem and the person complains about it, the SPCA will step in, and then it's a very different approach.
Mike, the, although I understand that, the practicality is, to use Jeff's question to jump off on, if you're walking around State Line Woods and there are lots of dogs running around, and usually, other than some staff that may be out mowing a field or something like that, it's people that are using the park as a park, or the woods as a park, or a place to run their dogs. And so there's not staff to turn to and say, this dog is bothering me. And if you've got a dog all over you, it's difficult to go find somebody, assuming there's somebody there, much less that you can call the SPCA to come over and rescue you by the time they get there. So the, the idea of being, of using the SPCA, that works great when my dear sweet old dog ran down a deer and, I didn't know this was happening, and it would cause a lot of concern and need to be addressed. That would be an outstanding example for the SPCA. But when you have an emergency, if, if kids are playing out here in the field and there's a dog running around, the SPCA may not be the solution to, to this problem.
Like out here.
Do you have a discretion?
This is another thing that keep up. People have dogs down here without leashes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they do.
My suggestion was, if you did make it for the entire township, couldn't you use your discretion?
Absolutely.
If you, if, if somebody called and said, there's a, this person is walking down the street, I don't know, on a township road and they don't have the dog on leash, I mean, couldn't you use your discretion that you don't always have, you know, you could call the SPCA or, if there's a situation Scotter's describing, you could go.
Let's go back to the SPCA. The SPCA is contracted to handle dog complaints. They're not gonna respond to an immediate concern, that's our job. And the, the problem we have is only when the dogs are excited by the density of people. That's why I said just in safe parks. Or athletic fields. I think that was a good idea because the question has come up, the athletic fields of the school districts where people have brought their dog, assuming that they are under control, and with that environment, they're not. So you want them on leash.
But then what do you do in something like here at State Arm Woods if you have this problem?
If you have a problem, that's a separate matter altogether. The dogs, you're still liable for the dog's conduct, whether it's on leash or not, you're still liable for it. Yeah?
I've observed no problems. I was just asking because I'm a dog owner, my dog's off leash and it's fine and like meets the other dogs. I mean, there's very few people there. And I think the county law that the chief already said that has to be under control, that covers it already. Large crowds, I agree totally, it's a different situation because dogs go, can go crazy, even well behaved ones. But I'd say ninety percent of the people in State Line Woods are walking their dogs, most of them are off leash. And I've heard of no problems. I don't know if the chief has.
I agree with you. Your, your dog is absolutely controlled. I've seen others that are same way. I don't think we need to put it, all we need to do is where they're going to get excited and people assume that they're under control, not understanding that environment. That just gives us a little authority to say, hey, we walked our dog on leash when they're around all these children. And that's pretty much the issue in Nixon Park too.
Uh, Chief, would you, can you, can you illuminate me the, the, um, state dog law as it currently exists? Does that adequately provide you with, um, the legal basis for intervening in events that are threatening or are a problem?
I believe so. I mean, that has a lot of force for police officers in that law. Yeah, I believe that's sufficient. I, I just think there are some people who don't understand, yes, your dog's nobody under control, but not in this environment. And that's the whole reason for approaching the township to start with. There are people who walk their dogs in Nixon Park and don't understand the atmosphere there. I guess that's the best way to put it. I just wanted to extend it to the athletic fields because the same thing occurs there. I think whoever suggested athletic field was a good suggestion.
It was me.
Okay, good suggestion.
Well, I'd also like to add, how about a scoop law in conjunction with this?
Definitely.
At least saying okay.
I thought the park had that.
It does.
Well, they tell you to do it, but I just know enforcement.
Yeah.
Art, where we tend on this, do you want to, um, amend it to include athletic fields as well and vote on it?
No, you can't vote on it. That's not.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Do you think that should change?
I, I think that, that, um, fine tuning the language to include other kinds of, of geographical areas like the, like the, um, baseball fields.
Athletic fields.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
That makes sense. Okay.
Do they really have laws that make people pick up after the dogs?
Oh, sure.
Can you add that in there?
Sure.
Why not?
Cooper scoop.
Please do.
They do it, play places.
So you guys carefully have to tell them they have to pick it up as well?
I did.
Well, you get, you get the neighbor who walks his dog down the street just doing it on somebody else's.
Right, that's the one we want.
No, because it's very married, so they have athletic fields in the park.
Yeah, sure.
Now, my, now my front lawn?
No, it's okay. I mean, that's a different issue. We had that problem with somebody.
Oh, we've had that problem.
Not body, but something else in the township had that problem with a neighbor.
That's why people walk their dogs.
Yeah, they don't poop.
Right, right, that's right. Exactly right. Okay, moving on.
Um, you guys, we've had discussion about moving this June public meeting date.
Yes. Do we, what, I'm sorry?
Moving the June public meeting date, we went back and forth via emails.
Yes.
Yes.
And it looked like you guys, the June twenty-sixth was the date. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So what? The June post meeting?
Oh, the water, so it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, because, um, Mike had the conflict, it's not, and that was coming up. So I wanted to be able to put it on the website early enough and put it in paper.
Wednesday, June twenty-sixth.
Um, Scudder, when you get done, after you get done looking at the fire job, I need, Bob and Mike came down, already signed those plans, I need you to sign them as well.
Oh, yes, sure.
Granite Ridge and Teague are over there. I put little yellow notes so you know where, which page.
Um, you're way ahead of me though. June twenty-sixth.
Mm-hmm, it's our normal, will be our normal supervisors meeting. All right, Lisa, what else?
Um.
You want to talk about, on the agenda?
Well, I was going to finish. So Scudder's going to sign those plans and then Teague Lumber plan, I'm going to give them all their plans for, Granite Ridge is only going to get one set.
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
And Scudder, did you see Bob Adams' email today? His letter?
Oh, um, in response to, to, um, Matt Sabo's letter? No, I did not see it.
Here it is. And also, just about, actually, how about the Route One forty-one? The emails attached.
Yeah.
Um, we've talked before about the need for, you know, as Joe pointed out, we're not doing what we need to do with signs. And so our zoning officer's been working more and more because, you know, we, we need more, him to be out there more, looking at property violations, signs, things like that. But the other thing is, we're getting to the point where we're paying this third-party building inspecting company almost full-time.
Lisa, I'm sorry. I want to jump back for one second.
Okay.
My recollection as we were talking before about setting the supervisors meeting was that, um, I had a conflict, but I cleared my conflict for the twenty-sixth.
Right.
But then you had a conflict.
And I cleared it.
So you're in the deal with it.
So that the company, twenty-sixth.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you're up.
Yes.
Okay, so fast forward to where you were, sorry.
Let's, want, somebody else in eight minutes. Um, so we're at the point now where we're starting to pay full-time for a building inspector to a third-party company. And we're only getting busier because now we have Granite Ridge coming, it'll be coming in. And we have, you know, more and more things going on. So I just wanted to have you guys start thinking about whether you want to continue to pay a third-party company full-time, which is double the rate per hour what you would pay an employee. Or if you want to consider hiring somebody full-time for building inspectors. I mean, you don't need, I just want to put the thought in your head.
Yeah, why don't we talk about this?
I mean, what, I think, I have a lot of things that I need the three of us to talk about anyway, but that's something that I think you guys should think about.
Quite well taken.
You're thinking, you're thinking full-time?
Yeah, they're here full-time.
Can you give us some figures?
Well, right now, we pay six.
For better understanding.
Right now, we pay sixty dollars an hour to a third-party. Granted, we don't have to pay the benefits for a third-party. Um, the average building inspector, I've checked around other townships, makes about sixty to sixty-five thousand a year, which is about thirty dollars an hour. Plus benefits, which brings it up to about thirty-six an hour.
But the last guy didn't work out so well.
No.
No.
And?
No.
He was also filling for commute.
Right.
But there's more control if you're an employee because if he's not working out, you can deal with that. But if you're, if you're hiring a company and the company has one of its employees as the contractor that you're using, now you've got to go to the company and the company's got to decide if they're going to move them and whatever. So there's, it's, there's extra layers. It may be the bottom line is that you get to the same point, but there's more to it.
Yeah, I'm just saying let's be cautious, not look back into the stew.
Well.
Absolutely.
Again, the township is changing, the township's getting bigger, and I've been the one questioning, not questioning, but asking Lisa about this. Because there are situations that occur, I mean, the immediate response, where you could get your employee, you can't get these guys. And then when I'm in the picture, whether I take the uniform off or not, I'm a police officer and there are different situations when police officers do things in certain buildings. It's all sudden, why do you have search warrant? Instead of, I'm just here to see why this door doesn't open because people can't get out. And then I've got to go through a whole bunch of justification and that issue will come up. Sure. Uh, there are things we need to be doing and there are things that haven't been done simply because you don't have the control over these third-parties that you have with anything else. So, just some ideas.
Phil?
From a dollars and cents standpoint, it's the right thing to do because at sixty dollars an hour for forty-eight weeks a year is a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And at thirty-six dollars an hour, that's seventy thousand dollars a year. So you're saving forty-five thousand dollars a year. If you go that approach and with Scudder's comments, you have a little more control.
Well, for example, you know, our current, our current building inspector who works for this third-party company, um, I must say, he is responsible because I call him after hours and have him go out things. You know, he's, he's actually a supervisor and he's barber.
Not for long.
Right.
He just lost his prime birth.
Well, anyway, he, um.
He might be available.
Yeah, he might. He's going to have more free time next year.
Well, I, I know for certain that, you know, he, he does an excellent job, I must say. He, he is every day bringing me something new that we should be doing with building inspection. You know, it, you know, he, he does a good job and he's on top of it. We really, we could use him more and more and more.
And we're going to, he did more and more.
Now, is there any conflict with him entering into the zoning portion or is he already under that, uh, umbrella?
He's already licensed for that.
So, I mean, he could look at sign ordinances and enforce things.
And, and we would have him do that because, um, our current zoning officer is part-time.
Right.
So we, we, we need as many responsible pairs of eyes looking around the township to help us.
Oh, there we.
Enforce the things that, that you want enforced. And the political signs is just one of them. Or the other signs that we were talking of, a sign being up for eight or nine years. I was unaware of it, other people were. If someone comes in and, and makes a slight issue out of it, it would get attention. And that's all we can do. We really can't be out twenty-four seven, looking, watching, keeping track of. And it's not the way I want to operate either.
Well, the problem is right now, our building inspector, because he works for a third-party, has to split his time with us. So, so we're pulling him away from his other time more and more. And we're getting to the point where we're going to have to commit more time to the third-party because they have to take him away from another township.
Okay, that's the one, that's, I think we've exhausted this. We have one more thing. Is there something more on Cypress Street that you want to talk about?
Well, one other thing I was going to tell you. I sent you guys an email updating on Stevens Gardens. We had a long meeting yesterday with.
I haven't heard.
With, um, building inspector, zoning officer, our attorney, our engineer and Stevens Gardens and all their people. Because we did put a cease and desist on Stevens Gardens, which they have a big sign up letting everybody know it's our fault.
Yeah.
And, um, they.
That's fine, they go.
Probably not.
Did you get a permit for that?
But it makes all their neighbors happy, that's something. Um, so we've explained to them what they need to do in order to get a temporary CO, in order to open again for business. And tomorrow, the fire marshal's meeting with them to explain to them because they need to understand how to clear everything around the building, how to clean up the property, what they have to do in order to get a temporary CO. And then they're going to also apply for a demolition permit to remove the burned building and all the debris. So they're going to get a temporary CO and the demolition permits, which are both going to be valid for a hundred and twenty days. Once they do everything they're supposed to do, they'll get the temporary CO. Once they get the temporary CO, then they have to start working on a plan to rebuild and to do permanent changes out there.
I'm sure I understood what you said, Lisa, that we're going to get a, a temporary CO.
Just to be able to open and operate. Because right now they're not allowed.
And when is that going to be issued?
Once they do everything that they're required to do.
A hundred and twenty days?
No. Once, we gave them an outline of everything they have to do in order to get a temporary CO.
Okay.
Once they do that, they'll get the temporary CO.
Okay.
It'll be valid for a hundred and twenty days.
When they, when they say they've done this, that's subject to the building inspector's approval?
Yes.
And the fire marshal.
And the fire, excellent, thank you.
And the zoning officer.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I, a while ago, we've discussed this several times. The borough sent us a proposal. They want to see if the township's interested in sharing this study to look at turning Cypress Street into one-way, two-way. They, they sent us this a few months ago.
Yeah.
Um, they're, they're thinking of turning both portions of Cypress Street in the township and the borough into two-way traffic, both ways. So they want to know if the township would be willing to participate in the study to see if it's possible to do.
Doesn't that go back to two thousand and ten?
Yes.
And doesn't it also say in two thousand and ten, they were supposed to have a traffic, traffic study completed by then?
Yes.
And it never was.
Right.
Okay. Do they give us an idea what it's going to cost to participate in it and what will be the consequences of that study?
Well.
I don't like the consequences.
No.
There, the total cost for the study's fifty-eight thousand dollars. The borough said that if the township decided they would be willing to participate, then we could discuss how it would be broken up.
Albert?
Because we only have the two portions on either end of the borough.
What, what is your opinion of, of this idea, Lisa?
Well, they did it back in the sixties. They made it two ways for a short period of time when the bridge on State Street collapsed, or was being rebuilt collapsed. It worked then, but the volumes of traffic were different and the bypass wasn't here. So it has worked in the past, but I haven't really thought about it. I'm just curious as to whether, is New Garden in this?
It would have to be.
Yeah, it would have to be.
Yeah.
Do you know, Lisa?
They said they've approached New Garden, but, um, New Garden hasn't committed yet.
Because they've got that intersection where they come back together again.
Yeah, that's where it came back together before. So, and it was like that in the, even before that, you have to look at the history of how Cypress Street was worked. In the forties, it was divided the way it's divided now in the state Cypress Street. I think there are a lot of things we have to think about because of the site distances, not so much in the township as in the borough. I don't see a real big issue in the township because you're running traffic lights in both directions.
Isn't that the purpose for doing a site, is to limit those issues and make some sort of a judgment as to what your options are?
Absolutely, but a lot of studies miss things as we've seen. We want to be, if we're going to do the study and we're going to fund part of it, then we want to see what's going on with the study and what it's elected to do.
And the only way we can do that is talk with them, right?
Absolutely.
Well, it takes communication.
The problem you have there is you get, you hire a company to do a traffic study. For example, Cedar Creek Road. They do the traffic study, then you see what's wrong at the end of the traffic study, you say, too bad, we did it, it's done. I don't want to see that again. That's what I'm getting at.
Right. I'm not assuming that was a disaster. It's, and it's left us with a serious problem.
I also don't want to see that occur again. So I like to know, in other words, just don't give them the check, say, go ahead, we need to see what the criteria is for the study.
Correct, but it's, it's, you, you're phrasing this as a they and us, and it really should be a we. If we're going to be a part of it, we need to be an active participant in it, I would think.
But doesn't, isn't all the benefit to them, Kansas Square, to keep trucks out of the borough?
It is.
So the, the entire benefit is the borough. So why don't they pay the whole price?
They'll be out. They're getting ready.
Your definition, what you think is the reason for doing this. I don't know that that's the reason.
That was in a study he presented.
Right, but that was a different time, a different place.
That's what it was, so. I mean, they do have a problem with trucks going, going through.
Big ones.
Big ones, yeah.
Just to extend on all the issues that are being raised on this, that would make each of the two-way traffics one lane going to the borough. And I think we've all seen traffic backed up by double parking and so on, that you would have essentially then no lanes in that direction on that particular road. Right now, there are two lanes going in each direction. Uh, the other problem is, of course, where Route One initially is undivided, it then forks at both ends of the township. You would then have an incoming lane into the middle of what is now, looking from the air, a Y, a Y intersection. So you would have to find some way to get the traffic that's coming towards the Y in the middle, to the outside. In other words, you're, I don't know how you do that without creating more signage, more, more traffic lights, more overpasses. I mean, you have to somehow get this traffic to the opposite side if you in fact did that. I mean, have you thought about that? I mean. Uh, but one question I, I do have on top of that is who owns the roads? Is this a, a county road?
It's.
A state road?
It's the mall.
Yeah, but I think the borough, no, the borough owns theirs.
Cypress Street.
We own, the state owns our portion of Cypress. The borough, the borough owns theirs.
Right, okay. Right, okay.